Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia, Counselor Vido.
President.
Counselor Avila Janeda.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Pearl Otonda.
Here.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Ten minutes present.
We have a call.
Let me see. Memorials and celebratory resolutions. Go ahead.
Whereas the Chelsea Soldiers Home Honor Guard was first formed in late 2007 and early 2008 by Soldiers Home Commandant Mike Reska, and whereas Tom McDonough was assigned as the first Honor Guard Coordinator and Don Kingsbury the first Honor Guard Commandant, and whereas members of the Honor Guard participated in Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Moving Wall, UMass upward bound graduation, and many parades throughout the Commonwealth, and whereas the most important duty of the Honor Guard is the first Sunday memorial service held in St. Michael, the Archangel Chapel on the first Sunday of each month, now therefore be a resolve that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Chelsea, wish to go on record to recognize the devotion and commitment of those dedicated individuals, those that started the Honor Guard and current members, Tom Miller, Charles Lewis, Thomas Strata, Tim Reichert, Gertrude Rivers, Robert Bluen, and Willie McNeil. Your service to this country and the respect you have shown to your fellow service members goes above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Counselor Lopez. Adopt unanimously under suspension, seeing no objections. Would you like to speak on it, Counselor? You have the floor.
Good evening. I bring this request in front of you, my colleagues, city councilors, and public, just to recognize the members of the Honor Guard and the Chelsea Soldiers Home, who they have been doing a lot in different events, parades, at chapel, at Soldiers Home, and many other things, and I just want to recognize, and thank you for your service, and thank you for all what you have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Coopero.
I commend yous all the time. I go to the, when I go to the cemetery, yous are there, you do a great job, and it's an honor and a pleasure for yous to do so, and it's my honor and pleasure to know that there's dedicated people like you that like to serve veterans. Thank you for all you do for all of us.
Counselor Brown, Counselor Robinson, and then Counselor Brown.
As a veteran, I'd like to thank the Honor Guard. They represent the Soldiers Home very well, they represent the veterans who are at the Soldiers Home, they participate in the community, I just want to say congratulations for one veteran to the other veterans. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, to the Chelsea Honor Guard members, I want to thank you for your service. Again, I went over today, and I thought the young lady was my daughter, surprising me because I spoke to her last night, I told her, and my daughter's a United States Airman, and she's serving our country, so I wanted to thank them not only for the congratulations and the award today, but I want to thank you for your life and the life that you've given our country, the time, the energy, and the love that you show, not even, not only for our country, but for us here in Chelsea. We are honored to be amongst you for the work. As some of my colleagues have said, when we go out, we have these different events. It's always great to see you, and not just you, but you and your colleagues, but you're in uniform, you're proud, we really appreciate what you do. You've already served your time, you're back home, you're still serving your time, showing us how proud you are as an Airman, a Navy Woman, or Army Woman, but I really want to thank you and congratulations, and thank you, Counselor Lopez, for this award for them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to present with.
With a certificate, please.
All right, so we'll suspend the rules for a couple minutes. You can put that there, watch. I'm going to read it.
Introduced by.
Do you want me to read it?
Yep.
Next order of business. Next order of business, we have a resolution introduced by Counselor Avila Janeda and all members of the Chelsea City Council. Whereas, whereas Deb Antonelli started working at the Chelsea Soldiers Home making sandwiches in the canteen while attending Chelsea High School, and whereas Deb Antonelli would go on to work at the Chelsea Soldiers Home as a part-time certified nurse assistant. Her career progressed as she attended nursing school and became a registered nurse, received her Master of Public Administration at Suffolk University, and whereas Deb Antonelli comes from a longtime Chelsea family, whose parents are Robert Senior and Palma Belanger, assisted to James and Robert Junior, married to Frances Chip Antonelli, and mother to Anthony Antonelli. And whereas Deb Antonelli was placed in charge of staff development, named Assistant Director of Nursing, and for the last ten years served with distinction as Director of Nursing at the Chelsea Soldiers Home. And whereas Deb Antonelli will serve her last day and retire on June 30th, and whereas Deb Antonelli has undoubtedly ensured that all veterans are cared for with dignity, honor, and respect, and has touched the lives of veterans, their families, and staff at the Chelsea Soldiers Home, now therefore let it be resolved, that in honor of the thirty years of service and dedication to the veteran men and women residing and treated at the Chelsea Soldiers Home, that the Chelsea City Council respectfully and warm-heartedly gives gratitude to Deb Antonelli and wishes her a happy retirement. Counselor Avila Janeda.
I ask, does this be passed unanimously under suspension?
Seeing no objections.
Thank you. And I want to welcome Deb and her husband Chip for being here tonight, and it just seems to be, it must be Chelsea Soldiers Home night that we have both the honors and honors. And, you know, when you think of the Chelsea Soldiers Home, obviously, the first thing that comes to mind is all the veterans that are there and that care for it, but what needs to be also recognized is all the people who are working there. And Deb Antonelli epitomizes some of the dedication of those individuals who work on the Hill. And it's, you know, we don't, we take it for granted that it's a great employment center, and someone like Deb who can start off when she was a teenager, who was there working and progressed in her career from working as a part-time nurse, and then moving on to Director of Nursing in the, at the Chelsea Soldiers Home. But more importantly, not just the career, but the type of life that is serving, not just in a hospital, but more importantly, one that is caring for veterans. And one of, and I'm sure one of the most important patients she had there, members of, was her own father, who at the time had, after serving in the Army, he too stayed there, and she got to do what I'm sure all of us would want to do, is take care of our own parents. You know, but I wanted to recognize her thirty years of service to all those men and women who served up there, her professionalism, the fact that it's a longtime Chelsea family, the Belanger family here in the City of Chelsea, and I'm sure that there are many of you and many of them outside who are watching this, and wish her the best of luck, and now that you've served so many years at the Chelsea Soldiers Home, and just say simply, thank you.
I'm sorry, Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
I'm out of it.
So I'd like to thank my colleague for putting this resolution together. I've known Deb for a long time with my journeys visiting people at the Soldiers Home. And in here, there's one thing that sticks out that reminds me of Deb, and she has undoubtedly ensured that all veterans are cared for with dignity, honor, and respect, and has touched the lives of veterans and their families and staff at the Chelsea Soldiers Home. She also played a big role in making sure that the new hospital for veterans is going to happen at the Chelsea Soldiers Home, so she's leaving behind some good traits for other people to follow.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I'm batting two for two so far. So my daughter Deb, I want to congratulate you on your thirty years. My daughter, as I stated early, is right now in Kansas City, serving as the Air Force, but her job is a medic, and she's working on her masters in nursing, so I understand, and I know the hard work you went through, want to congratulate you on your thirty years that you have accomplished much, as Counselor stated, staying here and supporting our men and women and our veterans here. I want to just say thank you for your mentorship to all those that you mentored along the way, all those friendships that you made throughout and developed over the years. I know it will come to appreciate you more and more and more as time go by, as we try to fill your void. Thirty years is a long time, and basketball, they say, those are the big shoes to fill. So I know once you're gone, I know the men and women will miss not only that love, that care, that dedication that Counselor Avila Janeda so thought out to put in its resolution, but I also want to congratulate you as a city councilman, on behalf of the folks that I represent here in Chelsea, want to thank you for all of your thirty years' service, to our men and women, and most importantly, for your dedication to stay in Chelsea and work and try to make lives of men and women better. And I also want to thank your husband for still standing beside you through all those nights you left him to go to work and be with our men and women of the service and former. You stayed there. Thank you both on this thirty years of your service. God bless.
Well, if you'll allow Debbie and Chip to come forth so we can take some pictures. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Ready? All right. Do I hit this?
Yeah.
Public speaking? Anybody for public speaking? Anybody that wishes to address the council, public speaking?
If you'd like to say a few words, if you'd like to say a few words.
Actually, if anybody knows, we have another last one.
Actually, come over to the, come over to the microphone.
Chelsea is one of the worst. Are you sure you don't have the mic, or are you trying to?
Please state your name and address for the record.
So my name is Deborah Antonelli, and I reside in Everett, Massachusetts, but I was born and raised in Chelsea, Massachusetts. I'm actually a graduate of the class of 1979. In 1978, I got the opportunity to work at the Chelsea Soldiers Home, and through those years, I've met a lot of people, I've taken care of many veterans from all five services. I've taken care of uncles, aunts, nieces, daughters, brothers, and my own family, besides my father, my uncle resided there. It's a community that's well-natured, well-lovin', and always welcoming. It's a community that I am very proud to say that I chose to make my career in, because I have never felt so honored and dignified to take care of the group of people I take care of. I thank the state opportunities, they give me many opportunities. I achieved my MPA about three years ago, and that's because of a state incentive program. And I think that when opportunities are given to you, if you're doing good service, and you love the service that you're doing, you take all the opportunities that you can. So I want to thank everybody, the City of Chelsea, for recognizing me, for understanding the importance of Chelsea to my family. I'm going to try not to cry, but clearly, thank you for the support tonight. I did not expect this. Thank you all. Thank you.
Anybody else for public speaking? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jaime Caraballo, 939 Broadway. So I just want to give a head shout-out for, to you. Happy birthday, first of all.
Thank you.
Want to say, I just want to bring up something that was a little bit annoying, just to deal with the Chelsea resident parking. So I bought a car on a Saturday, and I feel like that was a little bit unfortunate for the fact, like, it wasn't, like, easy accessible to even do it online. I know there's a couple of CDs that you can do it online, and they give you, like, a paper, so you can put in the dash, and see if you get a ticket, you can just bring it on. So I had to, like, come to City Hall, just to do the whole process, bringing the ticket, making sure I submitted, and from there, getting the permit for the car. So just want to bring that up. That's all.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Approval of the June 3rd minute. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept and file, seeing none, so move.
Thank you, Counselor. Communications from the City Manager.
First communication, surrounding community agreement with Encore Casino. Dear Councilors, I am writing to follow up to my April 18, 2019 letter regarding the city's surrounding community agreement with the Encore Casino. I wish to follow up on the two requests that I made in that letter and ask for council votes. My original April 18, 2019 letter was attached for your convenience. First, I have requested that we set aside some funds for workforce development. I still believe that workforce development is an important and unmet need in the city. This casino mitigation agreement provides an opportunity to set aside a modest annual amount for that purpose. The source would be a portion of funds set aside in the existing agreement for roadway improvements, a program which the city already adequately supports through other available revenues. I respectfully request that the City Council authorize me to attempt to renegotiate the surrounding community agreement with Encore to include workforce development funds secured in the manner discussed above. Second, I have requested some direction from the City Council on the makeup of the committee required to disperse the annual $100,000 in funds for arts-cultural activities. At the subcommittee meeting held subsequent to my letter, the council seemed inclined to allow the existing Chelsea Council Council to serve as the awarding authority. Based upon that discussion, I have drafted an order that would accomplish that goal.
Can I have a motion, Counselor Brown?
Accepting and filing, there's something coming up on new business, Madam President.
Okay.
The next communication from the City Manager. Ordinance changes. I am submitting for your review and approval the final versions of the following ordinance and related documents. New sign ordinance, Chapter 34, Section 34-109, miscellaneous zoning ordinance amendments, new ordinance for outdoor cafe and dining areas, zoning ordinance for short-term rentals, new ordinance for regulating short-term rentals, order for local option on taxation of short-term rentals, and new vacant building ordinance. I believe I have attached all of the changes that we have discussed at the two subcommittee meetings. The only document that is not included here is the proposal for amendments to the inclusion of zoning ordinance. As discussed last evening, those proposed amendments, because they differ so substantively from what was originally submitted, must be returned to the planning board for a further public hearing and recommendation. I respectfully request approval of all the proposed documents.
Can I have a motion, Counselor Garcia?
Set the power. Things coming up on unfinished business.
Okay.
The next letter from the City Manager, short-term rental local option community impact fee.
I got it. Dear Councilors, I am writing with a clarification on the ability of the city to impose an additional local option tax of 3% on the short-term rentals that we are considering in the city, units solely in owner-occupied condominiums or single two- and three-family homes. As we've previously discussed, because the City of Chelsea already voted to adopt a local option room tax of 6% in 2010, that tax will automatically apply to all short-term rentals in the city occurring on or after July 1, 2019. However, in addition to this room excise tax collected on the city's behalf by the Commonwealth, the new state law allows for the adoption of an additional 3% community impact fee on certain rentals. The new law further provides that at least 35% of these community impact fees must be used solely for affordable housing or local infrastructure projects, but I am recommending that the entire amount be dedicated to support affordable housing. However, there is one wrinkle in this new law regarding this additional 3% community impact fee. In order to adopt a local option in Mass. General Law, what, Chapter 64G, Section 3DB, for an additional 3% community impact fee on short-term rentals located within an owner-occupied two- or three-family dwelling, the law doesn't apply the fee to units rented within an owner-occupied single-family unit. A municipality must first adopt a local option community impact fee in MGL Chapter 64G, Section 3DA, for professionally managed units. Professionally managed units are defined in the law as one of two or more short-term rental units that are located in the same city or town, operated by the same operator, and are not located within a single-family, two-family, or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. See Mass. General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 1. As you know, our proposed short-term rental regulations do not allow these kinds of rentals of professionally managed units. Nonetheless, if we want to collect a community impact fee on short-term rentals in owner-occupied two- and three-family homes, we need to adopt this additional section of the law to impose a fee on these rentals, which would only be collected if someday the city decides to allow for these types of rentals. To accomplish this goal, I have revised the order for the local option on the community impact fee for short-term rentals. The revised order is attached, and includes adoption of both Section 3DA and 3DB. I recommend adoption. Can I have a motion? Anybody? Thank you. Counselor Bishop moves to step to follow communication under suspension. Seeing no objections.
The next communication from the City Manager, request for conflict of interest law exemption.
I move to waive the reading and accept and file the communication. There's something coming up on the new business.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop.
The next communication, Salvation Army RFP.
Dear Councilors attached, you will find the draft of an RFP for redevelopment of the Salvation Army site that the city hopes to advertise sometime in the next few months.
I move to waive the reading and accept and file and send it to committee on conference.
So moved. Got it.
Okay.
Okay. We have a communication received from the City Manager regarding parking recommendations. Dear Councilors, early this spring, in lieu of moving forward with a contract for a comprehensive and expensive parking study, the City Council requested that we evaluate our parking program internally and come back to the City Council with some recommendations for improvements. Since that time, we have been meeting internally to consider ideas for improving our current parking program. At this point, we have consensus on the attached group of proposals. Please understand that each of these proposed changes would require a formal vote by the Traffic and Parking Commission to amend the existing parking regulations, but before presenting these to the commission, we wish to determine if any have, to determine if we have any support of the City Council. We feel all would bring some measure of relief to the current parking congestion that exists in our neighborhoods, although they each have impacts that not all residents will find positive. Of course, if we implement some or all of these measures and parking problems persist, we can consider more drastic changes, including extended hours of enforcement and/or expansion of 24/7 residence sticker parking areas. At this point, I suggest that the City Council schedule another subcommittee meeting so that we can discuss the pros and cons of each proposal, then we can together make some decisions about how best to move forward. Counselor Robinson.
The Subcommittee on Conference. There are no objections.
To follow communication, move to Subcommittee on Conference. Under suspension, no objections. Can I go on?
Yeah.
Next, communication received from City Manager Ambrosino regarding water and sewer rates. Dear Councilors, with the approval of the FY20 budget, including the FY20 budgets for the water and sewer enterprise systems, the DPW is prepared to move forward with the setting of rates for fiscal year 20. The approved expenditures that must be covered by the new FY20 rates are as follows. Water, $8,709,470, and sewer, $13,326,503. We have been reviewing proposed rates to cover these costs for the past few weeks. Based upon our best estimates, it appears that these costs can be covered under the current three-tiered system with the following new rates per 100 cubic feet. Water, Tier 1, $5.58, Tier 2, $6.80, Tier 3, $8.30. Sewer, Tier 1, $9.66, Tier 2, $10.54, Tier 3, $12.33. This represents identical increases in both water and sewer rates as follows, a 3% increase for Tiers 1 and 2, and a 5% increase for Tier 3. The detail is attached. With this increase, the average water and sewer bill in Chelsea, assuming annual usage of 120, 100 cubic feet, will be $1,828.80. That is a 2.97% increase. At the council's express request, we did consider a two-tiered system that collapsed Tier 1, 0 to 1,000 cubic feet, and Tier 2, 1,001 to 2,501 cubic feet, into a single tier, 0 to 2,501 cubic feet. This is also detailed in the attached rate analysis, however, as I mentioned in my original response to that council order, the impact of such a change is that those in Tier 1 who do the best of conserving water will pay more. In this scenario of a single tier to combine Tiers 1 and 2, the Tier 1 rate would be $6.13 for water and $10 for sewer. Although this is a decrease compared to the current Tier 2 rate, it represents a 13% increase in the Tier 1 water rate and a 6.6% increase in the Tier 1 sewer rate. Further, the average water and sewer bill would be $1,935.60, an increase of almost 9%. Because of this impact on those who use the least amount of water, I am not recommending this approach. Sometime in early July, the DPW will be holding a public hearing on the new proposed rates. As soon as the hearing date is set, I will notify the City Council. Can I have a motion?
That's in front of me. I'm going to suspend it. It will be a public hearing in July.
In July. Thank you.
Talk about the rates.
You have the floor, Counselor Bishop.
I want to speak on it. I don't know why we need any increase in the water and sewer rates. It's beyond me with a $3.5 million surplus in the water enterprise fund and a $3.5 million surplus in the sewer enterprise fund, $7 million in free cash in those two accounts. Now, there is a good deal more than that in those accounts, money that's appropriate for this, that, and the other thing, but I just don't understand why we have to go up at all with $7 million sitting there. And I think what we're charging now for water is, should be sufficient. If the MWRA is going up in their rates, then we need to attack them and go after them and say, "Why?" Because if you look around, they seem to be spending money pretty freely. And the taxpayers and water payers and sewer rate payers in the City of Chelsea are picking up the cost of the MWRA. And I really don't see the need to go up at all. I will attend the public hearing. I believe it's tentatively set for July 16, and I hope that the other councilors that are here tonight will also come to that meeting and express their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Counselor Coopero.
I'm expressing my opinion now. I don't have to come to that meeting. This is killing the poor people that live here. Not only are they going to drive the homeowners out, they're going to drive the tenants out, because no matter what you do, the tenants are going to pay. So we don't need this. We have money for everything else. You've got artists here to put money here, money there. Why don't we help the poor people that live here? Not only the homeowners, the people that rent, they're going to be the ones getting shafted. We shouldn't do that. We shouldn't do this. At this rate, you can't live here. At this rate, nobody can live here, not even me, and I lived here forty years. Any homeowner that lives here should understand, and if they have tenants, they shouldn't have to kill their tenants. This is a bad thing to go up this much. This is a bad thing, and nobody, when it comes time, all these people out there, come up and fight for you because if you don't, you're going to get shafted, and you don't want to get shafted. It's a bad thing. It's not just the homeowner, it's the tenants. They're going to pay the cost. So if you want to live in this city, come up and show your face and tell them, "Don't raise it because it's the wrong thing to do. I like living here. I don't want to be driven out," and that's what's going to happen to me and everybody else that's here. At this rate, we can't live here. It's only done to live for the rich people. Why? You've got to earn a hundred thousand or more to live in this city? It shouldn't be that way. We have money for everything else. Give a break to the people. Don't kill them. We don't need this water rate. Like Mr. Bishop says, there's extra money. He knows, and we all know. Give it back to the people. Give it back to the homeowners and to the renters. That is the right thing to do, and that's what we should do.
Councilor Pelletanda.
I know, it's kind of hard to follow my fellow colleague that just made those statements, but he is right, and my other councilor, Mr. Bishop, is right as well. The water keeps going up, the taxes keep going up. We seem not to get any relief here in the city of Chelsea, especially the homeowners, the renters. I mean, there has to be some, you know, something has to be done with this here. It just keeps going up, it keeps going out of control. I urge everyone to come up in July and voice their opinion because if you don't voice your opinion now, when the end of the year comes, your taxes are going to be going up, and that's going to be another problem for us. So, let's try to get the water bill down. Thank you.
Councilor DeHavre.
Yeah, and I agree with my fellow councilors here. You know, when I first signed up to this whole city council thing, one of the major reasons for it was, well, we're trying to figure out, why is it that every year, the cost of taxes, why do they have to go up if things don't change that much? And I remember my, my teacher, when I was studying for my broker's license, who said that he lived, his family lived in Marblehead because they couldn't afford land. Of course, that sounds odd, right? But the way that Marblehead tipped things over was by doing that, right? By increasing municipal charges and things like that, and adding extra cost here and there. That way, they became exclusive and, you know, kind of pushed out the poor people. It's, you know, we do have some control of it. I know there are bills that keep coming up, but bigger government isn't going to make it better in the city. So, we do need to kind of put on the brakes in some of these things that we're seeing, that we keep talking about, like the whole extra construction and all that stuff. We do need to kind of look into it because it's a legitimate scab, I mean, cut that needs to be, you know, scabbed over. Thank you.
And the other, okay. We have a communication received.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from City Parking Clerk Janet Sintra White regarding the actions approved at the June fourth, 2019 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Suspension, there are no objections.
Seeing none, so moved. Thank you, counselor.
We have a late communication received from Sherwood Watson Fisher.
Any objections to a late communication?
This is what regards to council order as to an update on marijuana establishments.
Everybody got a copy of the list of where the marijuana places are going to be located and what host agreements were in place?
Yep.
We move on with unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
Can we remove everything from unfinished business so we can?
It's listed on the agenda.
Listed on the agenda so we can take it up.
First order under unfinished business introduced by Councilor Brown read for the second time ordered that by this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to renegotiate the existing surrounding, surrounding community agreement with the WIN Mass. LLC by specifically seeking to redirect one hundred thousand dollars of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars annual roadway payment set forth in paragraph five-two-B of the set agreement, and instead to use such one hundred thousand dollar annual funding for the purpose of workforce development to prepare Chelsea residents for work in the casino or to backfill jobs in other industries such as the hospitality industry that will be impacted by the casino.
Counselor Brown.
Madam President, make a motion to adopt under roll call. Vote, please.
Got it. Sure.
Here we change in this, right? It says for roadwork payment. Then if we take it out of here, the citizen are going to pay for it. So we're taking it from here to give it somewhere else so the citizen will end up paying for it all over again. Why take it from where it was intended to do? Leave it where it is. Why give it to something else? It doesn't make no sense to take the money for what was intended to be done and put it somewhere else, and then the cost is going to go up for your roads, and you, the taxpayer, is going to have to pay for it again.
Counselor Janeda.
I'm going to be voting in support of the permission to allow city managers to renegotiate the, the agreement with the city, with the casino to defer one hundred thousand dollars of the two-twenty-five annual payment to workforce development. And we were in a meeting last week regarding, you know, redoing Broadway, and in that meeting, they talked about that there is funding that from either the Mass. Dart or the feds to do our roads at times. There are, we also have, we have chapter ninety money, we have state money. So, and we also have the CIP, which would take an annual bond. The ways and methods that roads can be fixed in our streets, there's multiple revenue streams available to a city if it needs to. However, in a community like Chelsea, the revenue stream for workforce development is nonexistent. So, if we want to have our population, our residents, have access to some sort of training to get them the jobs either at the casino or in the greater Boston area, this is a great way to find that money. The casino has basically given us money to either for the roads, or in this case, we're saying, can we do it for, you know, training? Maybe they're going to work in hospitality, maybe we're going to give them classes, culinary classes, whether it's schooling for hospitality, whatever it may be. But that's a good use, I think, in my view, of this hundred thousand dollars. We can find ways, city manager can find ways, to find way, you know, funding for our roads. But to get training, it's nearly impossible. So, I will be voting in favor, and I think it'll benefit our residents than one hundred thousand dollars that might fix, I don't know, a hundred yards, maybe at best, of sidewalk or whatever. So, this has my vote anyway. Thank you.
Counselor DeHavre.
Yeah, I am, I'll be voting in favor of this as well. I think the workforce development is a very important aspect that, in this society, is becoming increasingly important. We're having a whole bunch of, maybe because I'm in that group, but I'm seeing a lot of forty-five and fifty-year-old and above people who are overqualified and underemployed, and they're being displaced, and it's a group that people are not looking at, and I think that that money would be very well served to put it into the people who still have kids and families to support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Bishop.
The casino is giving us this money to use for our roadways and cultural things and so on, and we're going to turn around and move the money to pay for, to train people to work for the casino. Does that make any sense? Does that make any sense? Why would we train people to work at the casino? Why doesn't the, that's something that the casino should be spending money on. Not the money that they're giving us, using that money for that. So I'm opposed to this, and I spoke about it a few months ago when we talked about putting money up for, for, you know, to train people to work at the casino. Why should we be paying to, to have people work at the casino? I don't understand it. So I'm opposed to this, you know, taking the money out of the roadway. I can give you five streets that I need done in my district right now. Even with all that's being done this year, there are still others that need to be done. So, I'd like to see that money stay in the roadway fund rather than put it into what they want to put it in.
Counselor Brown.
So I'm opposed.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop.
Madam President, thank you. I'll be voting in favor. This money, I'm not sure why everyone is saying it's just for the casino. It's not just for the casino. It's workforce. It's for anything that we can work, find our residents to help them better themselves, prepare themselves for an opportunity, whether it's at the soldiers' home, Bunker Hill Community College. It's a workforce investment at the casino we have been in negotiation with to get these monies to do what they're intended to. We want to help our residents. We want our residents to get jobs. If there's jobs at the casino that we can help our residents get, we want to support that. If they're at Bunker Hill Community College, we want to support that. So this is just not for the casino. So, don't vote no because you think it's just for the casino. Vote yes because it's for your residents that you represent. Thank you.
Could you read the order again?
I'm going to read it. By this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes a city manager to renegotiate the existing surrounding community agreement with WIN MA, WIN M A L L C by specifically seeking to redirect one hundred thousand dollars of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar annual roadway payment set forth in paragraph five-point-two-point-B of the set agreement, and instead to use such one hundred thousand dollars annual funding for the purpose of workforce development to prepare Chelsea residents for work in the casino or to backfill jobs in other industries such as the hospitality industry that will be impacted by the casino.
Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Pelletanda. Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, but I disagree with some of my councilors. I'll be voting no for this, for moving the money over to the workforce development. As my president just read this, it says backfill jobs in the hospitality industry. But the hospitality industry is the casino, and it could be the hotels, but it doesn't say anything about any other jobs other than the hospitality industry. So, you're not going to get somebody a job at Mass. Port or at a law firm or something like that. I mean, this is going for one specific thing. I mean, you want to talk about the hundred thousand dollars, I mean, the casino is going to train people, hotels are going to train people, any other industry that people get jobs at, they're going to train them properly to get their position. We should give a hundred thousand to that there. We just talked about the water bill going up. Why can't we give the hundred thousand dollars to the people in Chelsea to help with their water bill? I mean, and those people can help their kids to get better jobs as well with the extra money that they're getting. I mean, it's, I just don't, I just don't buy it, I don't agree with it. I think it should stay where it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson.
I will be supporting this measure. I think as, as a community, we're here to help everybody. And if we have, if I have no skills, how can I get a job? So if we don't create a mechanism for people to be able to have an opportunity to take advantage of this little, little bit of money that we're setting aside, a hundred thousand dollars doesn't go pretty far when you're creating jobs. And I think it's, it's a good opportunity to get started somewhere to help create some positions for people here, and all of them might not end up at the casino, but they could end up somewhere else that might benefit them and make their life a little bit better.
Anybody else?
No.
No. Okay. Roll call.
A yes would be to adopt, a no would be not to adopt. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
No.
Counselor Recupero? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, three opposed, motion adopted. The next order introduced by Counselor Vido voted that the city of Chelsea accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty, to establish a other post-employment benefits liability trust fund to meet the current and future liabilities of the city for group health insurance benefits for retirees and their dependents, and to create a declaration of trust for such fund with the treasurer as the sole trustee.
Counselor Bishop moves roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. One introduced by Counselor Vido, voted that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty-D of the Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council accepts and approves the city of Chelsea other post-employment benefits OPEB trust agreement dated April twenty-four, twenty nineteen, executed by the city treasurer.
Counselor Garcia? Roll call. Roll call.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. We now have the order introduced by Counselor Brown, appropriate the FY twenty-twenty Community Preservation Committee operating budget, and motion that the council--
Make a motion to call this under roll call. Vote, please.
No? Are we, you just, you just asked for the twenty-twenty, correct?
Twenty-twenty, we've already--
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. The next one is the appropriate from the FY twenty-nineteen Community Preservation Fund for CPA projects.
Can I, can we just say what they are for the record?
Sure. Fifty thousand dollars for the Civil War Monument, fifty thousand dollars for the Garden Cemetery, fifty thousand dollars for Marlborough Street Community Garden, and fifty, no, nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars for the Marlborough Street Community Garden, and fifty thousand dollars for the Governor Bellingham Carey envelope repairs.
I think we should just do it separately just for the sake of, yeah.
Okay, who asked for this roll call?
Um--
Bobby?
No, it was Calvin.
Calvin?
Calvin.
Yes, please.
No, I'm sorry, we just were, I wasn't sure who had asked for the roll call.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing a great job. Just keep it--
Thank you.
Doing a great job.
Did you want to speak on it?
Yes, just very quickly.
Go ahead.
Just one for the public. We had a meeting this afternoon regarding CPA. We talked, discussed. It's the second time before us, we wanted to make sure everyone was clear what was going on here. There's a lot of great work. This money is to fix up, continue to revive some of the Chelsea history here. We're talking about today on this one here, it'd be the Civil War Monument, Garden Cemetery, Marlborough Street, Community Garden, which is going to be a really nice program. You know, we have a community garden. It's nice to see that they're spreading around the city. And the Governor's Bellingham Carey Square repairs.
We had the members of the board here today. They gave us an overview of what they like to do and what they are really excited about doing. So, we want to thank them for coming out tonight and I hope my colleagues will vote this in the favor. Thank you.
Councilor Avizaneda.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't stand up for what is going to be our inaugural vote on a CPA, you know, allocation. This is the first time the City of Chelsea will be voting to approve monies from the Community Preservation Act. And our first round is gearing towards more historic than anything else. Not that the other two are not in need, but in this initial pilot program and the small amounts that it is, of close to 50,000 usually, it just leaned heavily towards historic preservation. And I wanted to say thank you to the Community Preservation Board for their work in preparing this first round and to the voters who approved this. I'm looking forward to when this work actually gets done. Probably as stated, one of the projects will be completed in September in the fall, hopefully. That's the Civil War Monument out here in front of City Hall. And I think that greater things are going to be coming, both on the affordable housing front and green space. So, again, I just want to thank, we should support this. This is the whole idea that we thought three years ago when CPA was first mentioned and it should be a proud moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Voca.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. The next appropriate from the FY 2019 Community Preservation Fund for the CPA Projects. $50,000 project for the Congregation Aguda Chulum Building Envelope Repairs, $50,000 for Affordable Housing Trust Fund Housing Specialist.
Councilor Brown?
Brown, roll call vote.
Yep.
Roll call.
Would you like any discussion?
Just briefly. Again, we had a meeting. These two came up. They're very worthy of having support. Just really want to clarify that what we're doing, we are giving monies to assist, which is the money that the residents gave to us because of the vote in 2016. And this is our first year. We've been behind the ball on really working on CPA here. So, I want to thank Councilor Avizaneda for his early work in this, making this possible. And also the voters have voted in favor for us to do this. So, this money, we're giving $50,000 tonight to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and also to the building on Walnut Street. But they are also doing something. So, it's not just we're giving money to them and let them run what they want to do. They're also making an investment also to rest- for restoration and restoring of these historic, this one, the church on Walnut Street, historic piece of Chelsea, huh? Temple, I'm sorry. Sorry, as a deacon, I said church, but as a temple, thank you, Councilor. It's very important for us to really keep some of the history, some of the historic monuments in Chelsea. There's a lot of good things going on. We see a lot of new development going on. We see a lot of new roadways going on. But we also have to remember how important it is to keep some of the old historic registered artwork of Chelsea. So, I'll be supporting this in favor and I hope my colleagues also will. Thank you, Madam President.
This is one of the few things where it's good to do. It helps out the old broken down buildings to get fixed, which are part of Chelsea, and it helps down for the housing. This is one of the things that I would never argue against doing because it's a great thing.
Voca.
Voca. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. We have the cable votes. That, are that the City of Chelsea accepts the provisions of the General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, which establishes a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable related revenues for appropriation to support cable related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement, including but not limited to supportive public education or government access cable television services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement. The fund to begin operation for fiscal year 2020, which begins on July 1, 2019.
Can I have a motion?
Again, we had a meeting last week. We discussed these matters. They came up. I want to thank the school department for being here tonight. Don't see anyone from the Chelsea Community Television. I know Ricky's in the back. But these are, we had questions. We brought them into a meeting. We, I believe, went a favorable for us. So, hopefully this will be a quick vote in the favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilor Recupero? Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. The next order. Appropriate the FY 2020 Cable Television Public Educational or Governmental Access Special Revenue Funds Budgeted Motion for Public Access via Chelsea Community Cable Television. Salaries $215,000, operations $34,000, capital $15,000, total $264,367 for educational access via the Chelsea School Department. Salary $76,000, operations software $36,000, capital $200,000, total $312,000. For governmental access via the City Managers Office, salary zero, operations $30,000 for translation services, capital wireless improvement at central fire station location $55,000, total $85,000.
Can I have a motion? Councilor Robinson moves to roll call vote.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. We now have the ordinances. The first ordinance as amended is the zoning signs and illuminations.
I'd ask for a roll call vote if there are no objections on-
Seeing no objections?
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilor Recupero? Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. The next ordinance. Next ordinance is zoning, the eight zoning amendments. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a question. What is, what are we voting on right now?
You are voting on-
The outdoor cafe seating?
No. The eight zoning amendment proposals?
I don't have that.
This is nine J.
Huh?
On, on the listing. Do you have it?
Okay, I don't know which. We are on nine J. Okay.
The eight amendments.
Yes, it's the eight amendments.
All right. Any discussion on it?
Who moved the roll call? Anybody?
Roll call.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. The next one is the ordinance, outdoor cafe and dining as amended.
Can I have a motion? Any discussion?
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. We have the zoning for short-term rentals as amended.
Can I have a motion?
Ask for a roll call.
Councilor Robinson moves voca. On short-term rentals. Any discussions? Okay.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
No.
No. Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Ten in favor, one opposed. Motion adopted. We have the short-term rental ordinance as amended.
Roll call.
Councilor Bishop moves for, to roll call.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero? Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. We have the other order of short-term rentals as amended.
Can I have a motion?
Roll call.
Councilor Robinson moves to roll call.
There are no objections?
Seeing none.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed. Motion adopted. We have the regulation of vacant buildings as amended.
Is that this?
I'm sorry, what we got?
This is the regulation on vacant buildings.
Vacant building ordinance. Can I have a motion?
Ask for a roll call vote if there are no objections.
Councilor Robinson moves to roll call vote.
I object.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry?
We have a question about what we voted on.
I thought we already voted on the vacant building.
No, we-
Now with the newer members?
No.
We just did, the last one we did was a short-term rentals.
We've got an objection over here.
Nope.
No.
We're, it's in front of us right now. And Councilor Robinson moved to roll call?
I object.
And Councilor Pelletanda objected, which means that-
Move to roll call.
You can't, to a roll call. To a vote, no.
But why were you even asked then?
I didn't ask. Let's roll call.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Pelletanda?
No.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Ten in favor, one opposed. Motion adopted. We have the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Order, actually, I'll ask to accept and file that communication and move it to the planning board.
We should move it to the planning board?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
They'll set up a new, a new-
Public hearing also.
Public hearing.
Yes.
Did you want a conference also on that?
Well, we just came out of conference.
Okay.
I don't think we need another conference.
I don't think so either.
We've been kicking it around now for about a year.
Okay.
Are we all set?
Do you want to roll call or suspension?
On the suspension.
On the suspension. Okay, that's it on unfinished business.
All right, so now, second reading. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding appointments to boards and commissions. I'll just name the folks that are looking to be appointed to boards and commissions. For zoning board of appeals, Joan Cromwell from 38 Addison Street to fill the unexpired term of Henry Wilson. For the planning board, Ms. Sharon Caulfield of 26 Breakwater Cove in Chelsea to fill the unexpired term of Joan Cromwell. For appointment to the planning board, Mr. Eric Ian Asquith of 20 Willard Street in Chelsea to fill the unexpired term of Oliver Demel, who resigned. For appointment to the planning board, Ms. Sarah Armin, 50 Garfield Avenue of Chelsea to fill unexpired term of Indira Alfaro, who resigned. For appointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Adele Elf Schlotower, 9 Admirals Way in Chelsea. For reappointment to the Cultural Council, Mr. Dukia Christmas, 67 Cook Ave. Yep, and that's it. Can I have?
Most of the current appointments and roll call vote, please.
You got it, Councilor Brown.
Councilor Garcia? Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
And Counsel Recupero. Eleven in favor, none opposed, motion adopted.
Okay, we have a total of nine orders introduced by Counsel Brown regarding, regarding following salary deficits funded by salary reserve transfers.
Uh, Counsel Brown asked me to, uh, separate them in categories of salary reserves.
And I got them here, um, thank you, Mr. Plurk. Um, if I could, just to move along, we could do twelve D, one through nine, those are all salaries. We've talked about them, if anyone has any questions. If not, it's one through nine under twelve D.
Roll call.
So we can take them all, and they're all salaries.
Yeah.
What do you mean twelve D?
As listed on the agenda.
It's under ten B.
Twelve D one.
Oh, you mean on the actual, got it.
Okay.
So all nine. I'm good.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Eleven in favor, none opposed, motion adopted. We have the free cash orders.
Madam President, if it's okay, um, we have twelve P, one through four, uh, those are free cash. Um, we haven't spoke on them, if you like, we could read them, just the amount, but I'd like to put them together in one vote.
You got it.
Did you want me to read the amounts?
Yeah, you don't have to.
No, I don't have to, okay. Okay, Counsel Garcia. Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Nine-one-one.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one appson, motion adopted. We have the revolving account. We have the revolving accounts.
We just voted on something that was DPW, I should have voted.
Recuse yourself.
I know.
Go ahead.
What do I say? No, wait, is that right now?
Go ahead.
Are these the?
Before we go.
But I don't know if we just voted on that, or if that was, if that's now. I'm sorry, where are we right now?
Revolving, is that the vendors? Are they?
That's right now. All right, I have to recuse myself, because it's DPW. Oh, wait, 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 was the previous one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'd like to recuse myself from the previous vote, I accidentally voted on it, my husband works for DPW, and I should not have voted on that, so.
Recused.
Yeah, thank you.
Then the, uh, vote was nine zero, uh, two.
One appson.
Right.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
This is the revolving fund account.
Do you have a question, Counsel Recupero?
On this revolving fund account, what do they mean by, for the school department, not resident students, what is that?
Do you have an answer, would you mind, Mr. Ambrosino?
It's something we have to, it never even came on the floor, and it wasn't ready.
So the Chelsea School Department provides some services to non-residents, they get tuition for it, and, uh, they make some money on it. They have some programming that other communities send kids to, and so this is a revolving fund to collect that money and use it within the school department.
What do you mean, non-residents, students that don't live there?
Correct, we have programs for our students that are set up, and some, Monica, if you want to explain this, is that accurate? So, the school department sets up some programming to, for, uh, specialized students, Chelsea students, in our school system. But they're such good programs, that some other communities want to send kids to take advantage of the program that we're offering to our own residents. We charge them tuition to come in and, and take part in that, that programming.
Do we charge them?
Correct, they pay the city, the school department, tuition for their out-of-district children to come in to one of the programs that we're offering to our own residents.
Is that the same, what we do the same thing when our students go somewhere else, we pay them?
When we don't have a program for special needs students, we have to pay other, uh, we usually pay other schools to provide some program that we don't have the capability to offer, yes.
I knew something they went to other, I would call your school, and we had.
Oh, wait, okay. Yes, Counsel Brown, did you have a question as well? No, okay, I think, I think we're all, we're clear here, thank you, Mr. Ambrosino.
So this is just to set up that fund.
Got it, thank you.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Eleven in favor and none opposed. The other revolving account.
Show me where you are.
Twelve F. Twelve F two.
Twelve D, I believe it is.
One through four, is that correct?
Twelve F two.
What is it?
Twelve F two.
Okay, that's the single one.
That's the other revolving account, you only had two of them. Make a motion, Counsel?
Yeah, motion, roll call vote please.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Eleven in favor, none opposed, motion adopted. You have the vendor payments, breakdown.
Motion that we have twelve G, one, two, three, four, five, here are all vendors that we have to pay.
Four.
Uh, it's a payment, if you want, you can explain what they are, but it's a payment, it's required for us to pay.
Just four.
I got one minute, one, two, I got, four.
Four. Right.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero. Ten in favor and none opposed, one appson, motion adopted. You have the acceptance of a gift, one thousand dollars from Janice Loby for the library.
Accepted under a roll call vote please. Slatter.
Right. Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda. Counsel Perlatonda.
Counsel Perlatonda?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
And Counsel Recupero. Counsel Recupero. Eleven zero zero zero, motion adopted. We now have the transferring of money, uh, monies of a borrowing, no longer needed to pay the cost of, uh, that project, and we have alternative capital projects. Do we have a motion?
The chair, so we can be clear, that's twelve I, one, two, three, four, and five. Five orders, I'd like to put them together, one roll call vote.
One roll call vote?
Yep.
All right.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido, uh, absent. Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
And Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one appson. That's all you have on the unfinished business.
All right, new business?
We move on to, uh, new business, first item on the new business, order introduced by Counsel Brown and Counsel Avizaneda. Ordered by this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the Chelsea Cultural Council to serve as the committee to determine disbursements of the one hundred thousand dollars annual payment for cultural events, street fears, art shows, fest- festivals, and related activities pursuant to paragraph seven point two of the surrounding community agreement with Winn, Mass.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Uh, motion to adopt on a roll call.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we had a subcommittee meeting regarding, um, designating, um, who would be in charge of allocating, thank you, Counsel. Allocating the one hundred thousand dollars that the casino is giving to the community, um, that is supposed to be spar- uh, spent on arts and cultural events. After much discussion, the city manager recommended and, and after discussion with the community and city council members, that the best vehicle for that, uh, best committee for that would be the actual, uh, cultural council that we have in place. Right now, that committee, um, receives a small amount of money, up to twenty thousand dollars, from the Mass Cultural Council, um, and they do the best they can with that twenty thousand. This large influx of money would be able to, um, fund, uh, many other events, uh, such as the art work that is, uh, lacking enough funding, uh, cultural events that go on here in the community. And the cultural council themselves, uh, are made up of members who volunteer, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, taking on applications from the community, uh, so that we can have a vibrant calendar of events here from spring all the way through winter. And I hope that, uh, my colleagues will support this with an affirmative action, thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
Oh, that's, oh, that's it, wow, great.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, again, um, just to echo what Counsel Avizaneda said, um, the culture, Chelsea Culture Council has been doing its job in the past, um, we had a meeting, um, the city manager sent the notice to us and came back that we should have a vote to make sure that we're in agreement. One of the members we just, um, reappointed tonight, uh, Dekia Christmas, someone that we all know around the community, is very active in the community, really has his heart, passion, right direction. Um, Marlene Jennings, and a lot of us see her working with, um, the community and doing the same type of work, putting Chelsea forward. Today, we had members up from the Chelsea Preservation Act, it just show what we're doing here, we're getting residents involved in programs to help our community, to beautify our communities. Was it last week, or a week ago, we did the Chelsea, um, Walk Behind Luther's Place, and, I don't know, I think it was well over two hundred and fifty people there. And this is some of the work, this is some of the money that we go into, and it's really good to see that, not only that we have a city manager that's, you know, negotiating and getting funds with surrounding entities that's coming to our city, not only the casino, but other places. And we're investing it back into our community, where we, folks are going out with their children, having a good time, having a safe time. Um, I support this organization, they have done this in the past, and we're just asking to confirm this vote to let them continue to do this work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Okay, roll call.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop. Counsel Recupero. Eleven in favor and none opposed, motion adopted. Next order introduced by Counsel Vido, whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has enacted several new laws around the regulation of short-term rentals in Massachusetts, specifically, chapter three-three-seven of the Acts of twenty eighteen. Whereas the Acts provide for the local taxation of the proceeds from such short-term rentals, and whereas the City of Chelsea City Council desires to capitalize and realize the benefits of these acts, now therefore be it ordered that the City of Chelsea accepts the provisions of subsection A of section three D of chapter sixty-four G of the Massachusetts General Laws, and imposes upon an operator of a short-term rental an additional community impact fee of three percent of the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy in a professionally managed unit, which is defined as one or two or more, uh, short-term rental units that are located in Chelsea, operated by the same operator, and are not located within a single-family, two-family, or three-family dwelling that includes the operator's primary residence. All community impact fees collected pursuant to this order shall be dedicated exclusively to affordable housing and deposited in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Can I have a motion? Counsel Robinson moves to roll call vote.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
And Counsel Recupero. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Next order introduced by Counsel Vido, whereas the City of Chelsea's administration has completed a public competitive bidding process on the contract for repairs and maintenance of the city's fire alarm systems, and desires to award the contract to Delco Utilities, Inc. Whereas the emergency management department is the city department overseeing the management of the services provided for in the contract, and the owners of Delco Utilities, Inc., Albert Peters and David Delaney, coming to the employees, do not work for the emergency management department. And whereas the owners of Delco Utilities, Inc., Albert Peters and David Delaney are Chelsea firefighters, and have filed with the city clerk and city manager disclosures pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, chapter two sixty-eight A and twenty-three. And whereas pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, chapter two sixty-eight A and twenty, the conflicts of interest laws requires the city council to grant an exemption to the city employees having a financial interest in a city contract. Now therefore be it ordered that the Chelsea City Council hereby is approved an exemption to the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest Laws, Massachusetts General Law, chap- chapter two sixty-eight A and twenty-four, David Delaney and Albert Peters, with regard to their contract for repairs and maintenance on Chelsea's fire alarm system. Which one?
Counsel Robinson.
We have been providing a service to the city over the past several years.
Counsel Garcia.
Yes.
Great, um, I had a few questions, um, because it talks about requests for conflict of interest, and it talks about employees that's working for us here at the city. Um, also, um, they will be the persons that are getting this contract, so obviously that should have us to have one or two questions. So my question is, um, will they be managing our fire alarm boxes? Will this contract, I wasn't here for the last contract, so that's why, it's a three-year contract, I wasn't here for the last year. And I did reach out to, um, our counselor, and maybe she can just give us some understanding before we vote on it, thank you. And I'd like to continue my speech.
So Delco Utilities is owned and operated by two current Chelsea Fire Department, um, employees, and Delco Utilities has had the contract to maintain our fire alarm system. So whenever a new building or an old building wishes to connect to the city's fire alarm system, that means when there's a smoke or anything, the Fire Department Emergency Management is alerted to dispatch. They've been working and maintaining and managing our system, um, for quite a few years now. Every time we do go out for competitive bidding, which is required by law, um, they win the bid, most times they are the only bidder, and clearly, one of the few companies that does know the city's system. And, um, pursuant to the law, they have to disclose this, which they have done, and the only, um, body that is authorized to provide this exemption is the city council, which you have done so, I think about three times, since I've been here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank, no.
No.
But I just, um, want to thank her for that, but it's again, you know, uh, it's good to know that they're not the ones that actually, that will be administrated, and I believe E-nine-one will be the administrators, correct?
So, um, so that we could get the conflict further apart, we do not have the Fire Department managing this contract, it's the Emergency Management Department.
So in this case, I would be voting in favor for it, but I just think that we should always put them on notice, it's the importance of the integrity, where they are employees of the city, where they are going out and they have this information, that they should be very discreet, and again, E, where E-nine-one is really the managing operators, they're there for their knowledge and understanding of what we've done here, but we still should be aware of this, thank you, Madam President.
Counsel Perlatonda.
What happens if we don't vote for this here, I mean, does it go out the contract to somebody else, and we'll be in limbo for a while, if we, something does happen?
Well, um, we probably pay more for the service, because we need people to get up and running and learning our system, um. We probably have to go back out to bid, but right now, this was the best bidder, and I believe the low bidder, which under law, we're supposed to accept the low bidder, but for the fact that they have a conflict. So the conflict has to be approved by the city council. Counsel Recupero. They've had the prior contract, yes. I'm sorry, did somebody ask me a question? Are we all sat here, anybody else have any questions for the city solicitor? Thank you, um, the solicitor.
Roll call, yeah. Uh, Counsel Garcia, absent, Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Perlatonda.
Yes.
Counsel Tihara.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Bishop.
Yes.
And Counsel Recupero. Ten in favor and none opposed, one. Next order introduced by Counsel Bishop, ordered that the Traffic and Parking Commission look into making Adams Street a one-way from Ave Beach Parkway to Garfield Ave, and hold a public hearing on the subject.
Counsel Bishop. Your, your order?
I move it out to be approved under suspension.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
Order introduced by Counsel Recupero, ordered that the city manager instructed Board of Health to look into allowing families that wish to raise chickens to do so without a special permit.
Counsel Recupero. Would you, would you like to speak on it?
This is about the chickens.
Yes, yes, can you put, put the microphone on?
Well, we have our rabbits, uh, you can have chickens now, but you need a special permit. Well, we are rabbits, and you can have chickens now, but you need a special permit. So why even, if somebody wants to have chickens, and he wants to grow his own chickens and eggs, because today's environment, we want to go green. So go green, but I like chicken, instead of buying one in the store. It, it's good to have the opportunity for you. If you want to eat a fresh egg, instead of an egg with E. coli on it, you can grow your own egg, and it's nice. They're allowing it now with a special permit, why not just allow it? It's a good thing. If somebody wishes to do so, we can't have roosters, but we, it's nice to have a chicken. Once in a while, get a fresh egg.
Any other counselors wish to speak on the matter? All right, roll call.
Roll call.
Well, Counsel Robinson?
I'd like to name him the commissioner to oversee the project.
Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Garcia.
I have no issue, yes.
Yes. Counsel Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Avzeneta.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
No.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
No.
Counsel Pelletanda.
Yes, if I can have a goat.
Counsel Tejada.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
No.
Counsel Bishop.
No.
Counsel McCupro.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor.
Get your chickens.
Four.
How much a dozen? Dozen eggs.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do you see a city solicitor if that needs approval by the Board of Health?
You need a special permit, you can have.
Hold on, Counselor.
So, the Board of Health does issue permits, but you would have to change the ordinance? You just don't have an order to allow it? Because we have it already in our city ordinances, fowl. So we do have a city ordinance around raising fowl and birds in Chelsea. So you would, you would, this does not change an ordinance, you would have to adopt and amend an ordinance that's already in place. But there are rules and regulations around where you put the cages, et cetera. If you're saying special permit through zoning, that's a different situation than what the Board of Health issues.
So can we, can we put it in an ordinance?
We have an ordinance in place as to the raising of chickens. I believe people have raised chickens in Chelsea with permission. You would have to amend the ordinance that is currently in place.
All right, thank you. So if this is a matter you'd like to take up, you'd have to do it in the fall.
Okay. Order introduced by Counsel McCupro. Be it hereby adopted as a policy of the city council the following. The city council will not vote to affirm the appointment of an individual to a multi-member board pursuant to section 4.2 of the charter if that individual has already served two consecutive terms and there are other residents willing to fill the vacancy. If there is no one willing to fill the vacancy, then that board member would be affirmed for a new term.
The city council will not vote to affirm the appointment of an individual to a multi-member board pursuant to, if that individual has two terms. Okay, Counselor McCupro.
I'd like to adopt on the roll call vote, if there's no objection.
Would you like to speak on it?
Yes. I think this is a good thing. It doesn't mean that these people can't go back on the boards. If nobody applies, they go right back on. But if somebody applies, somebody should have the opportunity. And the argument's going to be that, oh, they're not enough qualified, they don't know the job, they don't know this, and they don't know how to do it. Nobody's qualified when you start something. You learn. And you can learn, and if nobody really wants to do the job, let them have it. You know, but I believe myself that you should be, you shouldn't be there for an extended period of time forever, because sometimes that's what happens. These people stay there 10, 15, 20 years. It's nice to have a fresh perspective of how things are. And if nobody is starting, everybody's starting, nobody comes already with the experience. So this doesn't, the only thing this says is, if nobody applies, okay, you stay. If somebody applies, you're disqualified. That's not nothing. If, so if nobody is willing, they always say nobody's willing to apply for these jobs, so there's nothing to worry about. Nobody's ever going to take you out, because nobody applies. So if somebody applies, there's nothing wrong with giving somebody else an opportunity to do so. You know, because that, so if somebody is there and he's qualified, and somebody applies, he's already disqualified, because he's not qualified. If somebody applies for the job, right, and they're going to ask for it, and the way it is now, the person that's there, he's more qualified than that person.
Okay.
You will never put that person up there.
Got it. What else, Counselor?
Yes.
Anybody else wish to, Counsel Avzeneta?
Thank you. Based on the counselor's arguments, then I would expect him to be withdrawing his, um...
Nomination.
Papers, nomination papers. Because it's either years, or if anyone else wants your job. I'm going to vote against this, because I don't want my vote taken away on whether or not I think someone should stay on the board or leave the board. And I wouldn't want to take that vote away from the next council or any other council in the future. If I don't think that someone should be serving on the board, if they've been serving for too many years or whatnot, then I think I deserve the right, as a city councilor, to decide that. The charter states so. So I'm not about to take any voting power away from any counselor. And I don't think any of the council themselves, if you think about it, why should you be giving this blank policy and actually taking power away from us? If you don't feel that someone should be on the board any longer, then just vote no. We've always had that power. If you think that there's someone else that should be on the board, nominate them and lobby for them, and who knows, they'll end up being nominated. But to have that power taken away from anyone, your vote taken away, I'm not in agreement with that. And that's what this does. It takes my voting power away, and I wouldn't want to take that away from any future council. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. I, I'm reading this, you, we cannot, I'm going to rule this out of order. We cannot tell the city council how to vote. We just can't. So I'm sorry, Counsel McCupro. As much as I share your, your viewpoint on this whole issue about the people being on the boards and us needing new energy, the way that this is written, I just, I can't. Next order of business.
Introduced by Counsel Lopez. Order that the city manager instruct DPW if it is feasible to install two removable rubber speed bumps during the summer at 125 Marlborough Street and 70 Shambo Street to avoid cars driving fast at these two-way areas where there are a lot of children playing.
Counselor Lopez.
Adopting, I would like to adopt under suspension.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
And I would like to speak on it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I've been getting complaints, especially on Marlborough Street, where drivers going from Highland down to Marlborough Street, driving too fast. And to alleviate these fast drivers, I would like to see if we can put some, uh, uh, these speed bumps, so that way we just slow down a little bit, because there's a lot of people there, a lot of children playing, and, uh, to avoid an accident. Thank you.
I, I have a question. I don't know what I'm asking this question to. I know in the past when we've asked for speed bumps, it's, it's, we've, we get a lot of resistance. Is this something that should be sent over to Traffic Parking and Commission, or is this...
We can ask.
So, and you, you want to refer it to Traffic Parking Commission? Thank you. Yes, sure.
I mean, I feel Counsel Lopez's pain, because I had the same situation on Clinton Street, where I went to the Traffic Commission, I went to DPW, and wanted to put speed bumps on there, because in the summertime, from the housing project at the end of the street, I got motorcycles racing up and down the street, I got cars racing up and down the street. I mean, it's a nightmare. And they, I asked to put speed bumps there, and DPW wouldn't do it. Back then, it was because of the snow, but the summertime came, and no speed bumps. They did put out a, a signboard, a speed signboard, monitoring the cars going up and down there, and they felt it wasn't to their specification, wasn't, you know, enough speed going up and down the street that it warrant that. But it's, it seems to be a touch-and-go situation. Anything that seems to go to the Traffic Commission to do with speed bumps or signs or anything like that, it's like you have to pull teeth to get anything done.
I agree.
I mean, I wish you the best of luck, but I haven't had any luck. Nobody even gets back to you to tell you about the speed bumps.
That's true.
About the, uh, how fast they're going, or they're not going. It's, it's just a nightmare. It's just like the whole traffic and parking problem that we're having in Chelsea now, so. Thanks.
I agree. Counsel Robinson.
Well, I happen, I happen to be in a neighborhood on a Saturday visiting with my daughter and family. They live close to where Joe lives, and the traffic racing up and down Clinton Street was awful. Actually, I had put a call into traffic, and they had sent a cruiser up there to monitor the motorcycles and the cars that were speeding up and down Clinton Street. So it was a pretty dangerous situation.
Counsel McCupro.
You cannot tell the Parking and Traffic Commission what to do. Counsel Lopez is right. You want speed bumps here, we've been going through this for years. Every time you tell them, they make their choice. We, the councils, can't tell them what to do. We can request, but they always say no, like Counsel Pelletanda said. They never want to put it, they never say yes. So we can ask what we want, but we don't have the power to put them, they do.
The reason I put this is because on Shambo Street, people coming from Central, they take a right on Shambo, or taking a left on Shambo, towards that salt pile, they drive so fast there. There's children always playing around, also in Marlborough Streets. What I'm trying to do is try to avoid an accident, so that way later on, we don't cry, and we're not going to say, oh, we feel sorry. We feel sorry, it's too late, when someone's going to go hurt, you know? And I think Counsel Pelletanda, he asked for these bumps before, but I'm asking this for the summer only. That's when the kids are on vacation. So we got to do something about this.
Next order introduced by Counsel Lopez. Order that the city manager provide the council with a list of all the city cars that are being taken home. How many and who is taking those cars home and why?
Counsel Lopez.
Adopt under suspension, I would like to speak on it.
Any objections? Seeing none, so moved. Do you have the floor, Counselor?
Um, when we were talking about, uh, the, the budget, uh, came out that so many cars have been taken home, people who work in the city, some people live far, far away, they taking these cars. Why are we providing all these cars? Why are we spending all this money in gas, like Counsel McCupro asked also? Someone was spending like $3,000 something on gas. I go around a lot every day, and I, I don't think I spent $3,000 on gas the whole year. And that's why the reason I'm asking for this, because someone's taking advantage of this, and not only we give cars, we got to fix it, but we own, we still pay gas also. So something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lopez.
Next order introduced by Counsel Lopez. Order that the city manager ask ISD to provide the council with the list of overtime that they are doing, who is doing it, and why.
Counsel Lopez.
Adopt under suspension, I also would like to speak on it.
Any objections? Seeing none, you have the floor, Counselor.
ISD is doing a lot of overtime, and I don't think they're rotating the overtime. So I think they should rotate the overtime, not only, not only one person, two persons taking all this overtime, they should rotate it. We paying a supervisor overtime when somebody, a regular worker, can't be doing, can't be do that work. So that's why the reason I want to know all the overtime they're doing. Thank you.
That's it? All right, public announcement, let's save moments of silence to the end. Counselor McCupro.
My public announcement is this. When it comes time for the public to show up in City Hall for your water rate, show up, because if you don't, you're going to get shafted. And cuando está tiempo for the announce, ahora, when is it in July?
Julio.
Anuncio, in July.
Julio.
In Julio, la gente se quiere venir aquí, in City Hall, porque se va a subir tu agua, no solo al dueño de casa, a los tenants también, la gente que renta, ellos van a pagar más. So si tú quieres poner tu voz para decir que no subir la agua bien para aquí.
Counsel Tejada.
I'd like to wish Counsel Vido happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, 19.
Happy birthday. Thank you, thank you. Counsel Pelletanda.
I just want to make the residents of Chelsea aware, they haven't seen it in the paper online, that Mayor Marty Walsh of, of Boston is going after the MBTA because of the bad service that people are getting, mostly with the red line being down lately. I think all of us as counselors and fellow citizens, you know, we, we have the same pain with the 111 bus and the commuter rail and things like that. I think we should, and the silver line is well is getting worse. I think we should all send a letter to the, the governor, email him, call the office, voice your complaint about the way the transit system is being run. Maybe it's time that the transit system should be going out to a private company that could do a better way of running the system, because our rates keep going up on the transit. I mean, they just said today that every two years, the MBT, MBTA can go up 7% on their fares. We had a meeting with them back in 2016, and they didn't do anything about anything for Chelsea residents, as well as people taking the commuter rail into town. So now's the time to get out there and voice your opinion, talk to the governor, send letters to the MBTA. Let's stop the overgouging of price fares, I mean, especially when the T doesn't run like it should be. I mean, this is going on forever. It's time to do something about it. Thank you.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to wish everyone a safe summer. We know school is out now, so the kids are out, so be careful driving around, as Counsel Lopez said. It's always better to be proactive, and, you know, sometime when an accident happens, it's too late to say sorry. So I support you on your endeavor and your passion about that. But most importantly, remember, the school is now out. We have these, you know, crossing guards are no longer there, but we still have tracks with the silver line and the commuter rail that's high speed. So be aware, there's a lot of construction going on. Fortunate this casino will be opening this Sunday, and I'm sure that's going to back up some traffic in Chelsea, so have a little patience, but be very careful, and have a safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, as Counsel Brown said, this is the last meeting of the season, we will be back in September. I also want to remind the public that the movement, Summer League, Basketball League that we run in the summer, is holding their last signups this Friday at Highland Park from 5:00 to 8:00. I also want to wish the fathers in the room a happy belated Father's Day. And that's all I have. I have a moment of silence if nobody else has any other public announcements.
Happy birthday. What about birthdays?
Chelsea Public Health, they're slated next Tuesday. Right up at Spinelli's in Winfield. Just FYI for, for the council. I do also have a moment of silence. How about a moment of silence for my aunt who passed away on Friday, Florence Lee Marshall, who graduated Chelsea High in 1950?
I'd like to have a moment of silence for my cousin, little sister Joanna de Jesus, who lost her battle.